City Council is now in session. This meeting is necessary for the council to continue operations of the city and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities, and is being held pursuant to and in compliance with City of Norfolk Ordinance 47967, as authorized by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413, and will be conducted telephonically and electronically. Notice of this meeting was given to the public on May 15, 2020, in the Virginia Pilot, and electronic copy of the agenda was posted on the city's website, May 15, 2020. Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America. And to the republics and which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Doyle?
Here.
Mrs. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Alexander?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Tonight, we have no public hearings and no consent agenda, so we'll move directly to the regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. All public comments related to these items were heard at our hearing on Wednesday, May 6. There is no new business tonight. Dr. Fowler, you have the floor.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My comments tonight are really short and sweet, which is great news, I'm sure, for everybody involved. It's been a long process to get here. Normally, I don't think we would do this, but given the events and the situation that we've had with the major revisions that we went through, I did think it was probably important to clearly get the final reconciliation budget items on the table tonight and on the record for you before you vote. I also thought it would be helpful, since we haven't talked about it in the last couple meetings, to have a conversation about the Norfolk Public School funding as well, and I know that got brought up last week, and so I want to add some context and clarification to that. Okay, with that, let me move forward. This is the final fiscal year 21 financial plan. These aggregates are identical to the aggregates that we presented to you last Tuesday, but there are, it is important to go through each of these, so we still have a general fund that we are proposing, which is $40 million south of where we were originally proposing a fiscal 2021 budget. Enterprise funds, special revenue funds, and internal service funds have largely remained unchanged. The capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2021, you see illustrated there as well, and that includes the revisions to some new allocation, which we have reduced, for a total financial plan of 1.4, just over $1.4 billion. What I really wanted to do tonight, and I think the goal of my presentation, and then I'll get out of the way and let you all move on. The budget amendments that I believe were proposed based on our conversation from last Tuesday, Greg Patrick and Budget and I went back, there were really three that we heard loud and clear from council. One was to reinstitute funding for the Arts and Humanities Grants. Another one was to reinstitute the funding for the Human Services Grants Program. And finally was what it would take to minimize the cuts to our posts, recreation parks and open space, that would allow us to restore moving back to a 12 to 14 day mowing cycle, also allowing us to continue more frequent beautification of flower beds and trimming of shrubbery and all of that. So we went back, crunched those numbers, appreciate all the assistance from the departments on this, and that comes up to a total amended new sort, new use of funds of $760,000. Recognizing that we simply did not have any flexibility in the budget that we were proposing, we did not add $760,000 to the financial plan for fiscal 21. Instead, we looked to see where we could find some potential sources within the budget. We found those as follows. We further reduced funds for arts and culture consortium members, I'll get to that in a second. We are going to add one additional furlough day for a total of five furlough days for full-time staff in the city, and then we are going to accumulate some healthcare savings with the furloughs. So here's what, after a conversation with each of you and conversation with our department that handles the Arts and Humanities grant funding, what we decided to do was create a situation where all of the reductions were equivalent across the board for all of the consortium members. This, as you'll see in row, what do we have there? The Norfolk Commission on the Arts and Humanities, which is row three under the label row. What we have done is we've reinstituted $220,000 and 500, $220,524 back to that fund, which is also equivalent to an 11.2% reduction, so that every one of the consortium members will have an 11.2% reduction in their funds for fiscal 21 compared to the adopted fiscal Finally, let me just bring up the Norfolk Public Schools piece of this. There's been a little bit of confusion regarding where we stood on funding Norfolk Public Schools, and so I thought it would be important to make it clear here. Our budget that we're presenting to you tonight for adoption does not recommend council cuts or staff cuts to NPS funding. This projection of $8 million in reduced funding is purely a function of the funding formula, and so this is a projection at this time, right? We are anticipating that all of the local revenues, which are part of the funding formula to Norfolk Public Schools, will come in weaker in fiscal 21 than what they came in for fiscal 20. We also are anticipating that they will come in weaker than what we were initially proposing for fiscal 21. So as you can see here on the top line, the $8 million that we're anticipating in reduction for Norfolk Public Schools is a function of the local funding formula and those revenue streams. At this time, and I want to make this very clear so that everyone is clear, not just simply council, but the public as well, these numbers are projections, right? This is what we are forecasting, and it's coming from the same model that we're using to forecast our potential $40 million gap. So as things and conditions improve, which I think we certainly all hope that they will, all of this would end up better. Our overall budget gap of 40 million, we obviously will hope with some of the reopening and some things that will take place, that's smaller than anticipated, and likewise, that would mean this gap would be smaller than anticipated. Now however, I want to stress, in the event that conditions remain dire and we do not have this improvement in economic conditions as we're all hoping in quarter one and quarter two, we do have a path forward for Norfolk Public Schools that helps to maintain some semblance of wholeness for them, given where we were projecting their fiscal 21 previously. There are two buckets of money, the CARES Act, which Norfolk Schools is estimated to receive currently about $12.6 million, and then we also have the SWIFT money that I've talked about prior. The SWIFT money, we had allocated as $6 million a year in cash contribution, additional cash contribution for capital projects for the school system. I think the conversations that I've had with council and the conversations that we've had with Dr. Birdsong and Norfolk Public Schools, is we may want to allow the opportunity to flex that cash in the event that their operating expenses are unable to get covered in fiscal 21. And I think I've heard some sense from at least a few council members that while they're comfortable with that, what they really would like to see is prior to that flexing taking place would be for NPS to come back to the council and NPS to go directly to their board to provide what that would look like, and you know, what a path forward and a plan would be for those potential flex funds. And so that's what I think we would recommend to council as well, is it remains NPS's opportunity to flex those funds, we would just like to get a plan forward for how they would do that. So ultimately, you know, I think we have an opportunity for Norfolk Public Schools to mitigate a lot of the $8 million gap that we're projecting. Best case scenario is we wind up not seeing that size of a gap because conditions begin to improve. All right, so in closing, we're going to be closely watching quarter one and quarter two revenues. We'll be updating our forecasting model on a monthly basis with the arrival of new data. And so as we have said prior to this, this is the budget we are asking council to adopt this evening, but we do look forward to coming back sometime in early November after we've seen some additional data, with an opportunity to hopefully augment not just our budget, but the NPS budget then for quarter three and quarter four of fiscal 21. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Before we call R1, any questions to, for Dr. Fowler, before we call R1? You will have opportunity to comment as we go through the various items as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. McClellan?
So, Dr. Fowler, first of all, thank you very much. I appreciate the revision of this, and it's, I feel very confident having an economist as our city manager right now, so I'm glad you're at the helm. I just wanted, just a clarification, not really a question, related to the Commission on Arts and Culture and restoring those grants. Thank you, first of all, for doing that, I appreciate that. But this will be, those grants will go back through the commission, it'll be a once-a-year, not a biannual grant process, as you had recommended previously, and there will not be a restriction of $10,000 per grant. Could you just clarify that for the record, please?
Yeah, my apologies, ma'am, I should have done that. No, in fact, we did speak with the department and then obviously in conversations with yourself, which I know you had spoke to some commission members. No, so we are not recommending any changes to the process of that program. Recognize they are a bit behind because of the budget uncertainty, but now, you know, with the approval of the budget, if that happens this evening, they can move forward then with that budgeted amount and go through their normal process of handling those grant awards.
Thank you.
Okay. Others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Riddick, go right on.
Yeah, thank you. Chip, I sent you a little email this morning, and I also copied the council member. I've been getting so many calls from seniors, and you really would be, maybe you wouldn't be surprised at the number of seniors who use our facility. Now, I know quite a bit of the discussion of opening and closing has to do with the Health Department. Quite often, there's residue from a budget, whether you admit it or not, and I would just hope that you could take that and put in a lockbox, so that when the Health Department does give us to go ahead, open our rec centers and pools and fitness centers, that we'll have that money to do something with. And the same thing with the NEL program, I know we talked about that and there are some issues with that, but with the residue that you have, if we just put it in a lockbox, so when things change, you know, we'll be able to do some things to benefit our seniors and our youngsters. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Let me address that. So we do have money and enough money in the budget for recreation parks and open spaces to open facilities. As you alluded to, I mean, I thought our big concern right now is simply health. We are going to come back to council in the June 2 work session and provide you with kind of a path forward on how we're looking to reopen facilities. And I think what you'll see is, when we talk about the initial reopening of things like rec centers or libraries, it really is more about staff than it is about actual programming and activities occurring in the facility, because I think our expectation is that will likely not be allowed to take place for some time yet. But we do have a path forward to restore funds to programming and rec centers, should we be allowed to open those at the Health Department's guidance.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fowler.
R1?
R1?
R1 is an ordinance appropriating funds for operation of the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. Appropriating U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD entitlement grants, appropriating annual reoccurring grants, increasing certain fees, and regulating the payment of money from the city treasury. And Mr. Mayor, Clerk's Office received several emails this week, and we forward all of those pertaining this matter to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R2?
R2 is an ordinance approving the capital improvement plan budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. Appropriating $151,022,000 for certain projects approved therein, authorizing an issue of bonds in the amount of $84,103,211, and authorizing the expenditure of $66,916,989 in cash.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Mr. Riddick, I don't know of any new city manager that gets an 8-0 vote on their first budget. Should I vote against this?
Well, Tommy, what I was going to say to you earlier, you've always complained about downtown not getting any money. You and Martin got the lion's share of this budget, so I think you should vote yes.
Okay, okay. If you give me permission, sir, I appreciate that. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R3?
R3 is an ordinance appropriating grant funds totaling $62,200,000 to the school board of the City of Norfolk for grants, other special programs, and the School Nutrition Services Program, and authorizing the expenditure of the funds in fiscal year 2021 for Norfolk Public Schools.
Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Dr. Fowler, I appreciate the further explanation on the school funding. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R4?
R4 is an ordinance approving the 2021 officer and employee health insurance plans, employer and employee contribution rate, and authorizing the expenditure from the healthcare fund of a sum sufficient to be appropriated. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
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 Mr. Thomas? Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R5?
R5 is enhanced hazardous duty return for officers and employees of the Norfolk Sheriff's Office. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R6?
R6 is an ordinance approving the July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 budget for the Norfolk Law Library, authorizing the city treasurer to make disbursements and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of up to $232,900 of the Norfolk Law Library from various sources, including monies assessed and collected by the city as part of its cost of civil court actions and in accordance with the approved budget and the October 1, 1987 agreement among the city, the Norfolk Law Library, and the Norfolk and Portsmouth Bar Associations.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
You guys lost Angela.
I still see her.
That's her. That's her internet. We need better internet in this city.
Maybe the trees, the trees are blowing, it may be the trees. She's coming up twice.
Yes, she is, twice.
Is she there? Yeah. She's back.
I'm back. What did I miss?
Mrs. Graves?
What, what R did I miss?
R6. R6.
R6, okay, I vote aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R7?
R7 is an ordinance to authorize encroachment for the temporary installation of outdoor dining areas for existing restaurants in the public right-of-way in the downtown, traditional, and coastal character districts in accordance with defined standards and to authorize the city manager to approve such temporary encroachments for existing restaurants in the suburban character district or in exception to the defined standards as needed. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Before I vote on that, I just want to comment to Chip on the budget. I just want to say that I really appreciate the time and hard work that he and his staff put in, and also to him for taking into consideration what we all wanted and desired to come out of this budget and making the careful cuts and making the needed cuts, but working in a way that is our city whole and keeps us moving forward. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
I, I'm just impressed with how quickly the staff throughout all the departments moved open Norfolk plan. It was really a whole-of-government approach, and I really appreciate that, and I hope we continue to pivot, change, evolve, et cetera, as we push this out. So, so thank you to the staff for all your hard work and for our partners, WPA, Downtown Norfolk Council, and others. Yes, I vote aye.
Thank you. Mr. Riddick?
I have a question. If there's a restaurant that's not in the downtown or the coastal district, but does have a plan in the right-of-way, would they have a ability to come and ask to be, to enjoy this proposal?
The answer is yes.
Was that a aye, Mr. Riddick?
I asked a question, they didn't hear my question.
I heard the question. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Oh, the answer is yes. That if you're not included in this, you can apply.
Okay, okay. Okay, I vote aye.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
I have a question to piggyback off of Mr. Riddick.
Yes, Mrs. Graves.
Bernard said that if they're not included in that resolution, they can apply. Are we moving quickly on that, or is that something that the Planning Commission or the Planning Department can do administratively if they don't fall, if the businesses don't fall within the guideline, within the boundaries of the current ordinance?
It cannot be done administratively? And so hopefully, it could be done quickly.
It cannot be done administratively?
No.
But hopefully, it will be done quickly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Maybe we should look at adding some parameters to allow planning to have that administrative authority, some guidelines as they pertain to other areas that look similar, you know, that have some of the same similar guidelines and requirements that we're requiring downtown, so that a person doesn't have to wait for the application and then it to go through planning and then it to come to us and all that other stuff. So maybe we can look at something that will give them some administrative ability to do that based on this ordinance already being processed.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Graves, I agree, and we should allow as much flexibility to staff right now. We can go clean up afterwards, but I think, to your point, Angela, we want to make sure our restaurants, our retail establishments, et cetera, get back into business and start making money as possible. Yeah, thank you very much for that point, I appreciate that.
Angela, based on my conversations with George Homewood and the rest of the planning staff, I think that you'll find that planning is being extremely lenient right now.
Yeah, in fact, I mean, we are, we're moving quickly, we can move very quickly in terms of evaluating a proposal, and then I guess, I think what the city attorney and I are hearing is that you would also maybe like us to explore the possibility that if we're comfortable with said proposal, we just let them do it, rather than coming back to council each time, so we'll definitely look into that. Thank you. Okay, and I have one additional item, it's a resolution appointing or reappointing five persons to the Norfolk Criminal Justice Board for a certain term, and this is where the chief judges have changed, and we had to update this with this resolution. So adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle? Mrs. Doyle?
Bernard, do I have a conflict here?
I'm sorry, I was working on the last request. This is the appointments for the criminal justice board. No, you are not conflicted from voting on this one.
I vote aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Before we adjourn, I want to add my thanks to Dr. Fowler, but more importantly, to the council members, working with Dr. Fowler and working with staff and adjusting the budget, the spending plan, that, you know, shaving $40 million from the proposed budget that he had originally presented to us was a task. And council members, thank you for working with Dr. Fowler and making the adjustments and adopting our FY21 budget, but also want to thank you for what you're doing out in the community. I see you, you know, with the social distancing, your public service announcements, supporting local businesses, I talk to you, you're out shopping and ordering from local businesses, and I think that's important. Let's continue to work together as a council, and together we'll get through this, and we'll come back stronger than we have ever been. We are a resilient city. We've been through plagues, fires, turmoil, massive resistance, and we came through. So congratulations, Dr. Fowler, on your first budget. Now, having voted on the prevailing side, which we pass the budget, I'm going to reconsider his budget.
That'll be next year, right?
Mr. Mayor? Mrs. Smigel? Uh, Mister, um, Mister Smigel, go ahead. Go ahead, Mister Smigel.
Yeah, um, I, I hope this is not too early. I know it's only six-thirty and the polls close at seven. Uh, but I would like to be the first one to congratulate you, Councilwoman Graves and Councilwoman McClellan on your reelection and your landslide victories, uh, today. And I am looking forward to working with you at least for another two years, uh, with my term. But congratulations and thank you to the three of you for all that you do for the city of Norfolk as well.
Thank you, Mister Smigel. Okay, we are adjourned.